Five thirty presentation, but we're going to wait a couple of minutes to see if more commissioners show up and we can get started otherwise in a couple of minutes.
We got two more people show up. Okay. Oh, that's why I'm up here.
All right. We will get started with the presentation portion of the evening. Chandler will be our speaker tonight.
I don't know if it's fortunately or unfortunately, but I'll do my best. Had a little dental work done this morning, so if I mispronounce some words or fall over, just know that the ibuprofen didn't work. Okay. My name is Chandler. Good evening, Board. My name is Chandler Poole. I'm an economic development coordinator for the city of Des Moines, and I am going to talk to you tonight about the southeast industrial urban renewal plan. The southeast urban renewal plan sits on approximately 375 acres that is along Army Post Road and the bypass. It's roughly bounded by southeast 36th on the west, Pine Avenue on the south, southeast 45th on the east, with Army Post being the typical north boundary, but we do come up here and grab these 60 acres as well. It comes out here and touches the bypass. So, looking at this, it currently has a planned unit development on it, the Harvest Hills Plan Unit Development that was created in 2006 and I believe approved in 2009, 2010. As you can see, it didn't really materialize. We are looking at taking the future land use in the Plan DSM Plan from high-density residential, low-density residential, public, private quasi of use, and looking at becoming industrial, industrial node, within a neighborhood node, sorry. So, one of the things we looked at with this is, this site is actually very attractive for redevelopment. The majority of property owners have also agreed that this is something they'd like to see converted into more of an industrial and opportunity to bring in new companies and more employment into the city of Des Moines. So, when you look at what we need to do, working with planning staff and working with the different departments, we have to try to figure out how does this work with this change in designation? How does it support Plan DSM, the comprehensive plan, to make this change? And, excuse me. In our plan, the southeast industrial urban renewal plan, we identified a couple of goals that we see, that we feel will be accomplished, if not supported, and moved forward with the, with the change to this new designation. First one is economic development, and I'm going to highlight goal number two in the plan. Excuse me, go back to this. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm all right? Okay, there it is. Goal number two, focus on economic development efforts in strategic locations for continued vitality and growth. When I go back to the map, what makes this area very attractive for economic development sits right here, on the east side, a full diamond interchange off of the bypass. When we start working with economic development site selectors or the state of Iowa, or even the Greater Des Moines Partnership, one of the boxes that typically is asked, or one of the things they'd like to see, is how close are you to a major interchange or a major highway? Well, this is, as you can see, right there. That also plays into a goal about further down, dealing with transportation. What also makes this site attractive for strategic economic development is the fact that the bypass is also going through a process where it is possibly going to be given the designation as a federal interstate. Once again, that brings the site into more of a strategic place in order to do economic development and to locate new companies. Third reason why this is a very strategic site is the size, almost 370 acres of contiguous land that right now is utilized as agricultural. City of Des Moines does not have a lot of these parcels sitting around, and it puts us at a disadvantage. Being able to incorporate this and be able to offer it up as an opportunity puts us right back up with some of our surrounding communities, Montserrat, West Des Moines, Wakegan, pick one. So, that is also very attractive to us. But the one that I think really layers into this to make this an even more strategically attractive site is the fact that last year the city struck a, entered into an agreement with Ryan Companies and Shive Hattery to do all the due diligence required to have the site designated as a certified site through the state of Iowa. What that means is, the site itself will go through the architectural review, were there any, you know, prehistoric or historic settlements on the site, environmental review. They'd also talk about the utilities in the area. Where are they? If they're not onsite, when will they be put onsite and at what capacity? Is there a plan in place? So, all of those things are being done now with Shive Hattery and Ryan Companies. We've passed the first hurdle so far, which is to be included, and now we're working on the second hurdle, and that is to provide the data that's been requested by the state. Ryan Companies has been meeting with the state's third-party provider called Quest. Quest handles all of these submissions, and they're very impressed with where this is, the amount of information they've been provided, and the amount of information that is relevant to what we want to do. So, goal number two, with being very strategic, I believe that satisfies that quite extensively. Sorry. We were talking a little bit about why is this interchange critical and important to the potential for economic growth, economic development growth in this area, and that gets down to transportation. That's goal number six. Ensure freight facilities continue to meet the needs of the local economy while being sensitive to impacts on surrounding land uses. What that means to us is that companies that locate here do not have to try to snake their way through back roads, city roads, through populated areas to get to the interstate. It's all contained right here. So, for us, that's a very important aspect of transportation to make sure that we aren't putting undue stress on vehicles that really shouldn't be going through city streets into the neighborhoods. Public infrastructure utilities, goal number one, and I like objective number one underneath this in the staff report. Invest in and manage public infrastructure systems to support development and redevelopment in targeted areas. We believe this is definitely a targeted area. When you look at what must be done in this area to foster economic development, there's the nearest water. It's on the northwest corner of the proposed site. Still doesn't serve anything in here, doesn't serve the individuals through here, so there's an opportunity to enhance the infrastructure with the utilities for the residents in this area and for potential economic development growth. Same is said for sewer. These are just inlets along here, so they're not actually sanitary lines, sanitary lines over here. So, we're kind of stuck in the middle of two utilities that need to be brought in and enhanced in order for economic development activity to occur and for what may happen to the north and the south of the site, which Jason and I talked a little bit about earlier, meaning future planning ideas and what to do with the residential that would possibly grow and plan for that. Let's see here. So, it's, we believe it's rather straightforward. We have two property owners that have said, yes, we want to do this. They have provided their letters of consent because they're larger than 10 acres and they have an agricultural designation on tax status, so they've signed those and submitted them. We have held our hearing, set our hearing date, I believe it's for later this month. We have to meet with the taxing entities relatively soon here after this meeting, and we have, Councilman Gatto has asked us to meet with the neighborhood even though this does not sit within the Eastern Lake Neighborhood Association, but that's fine. So, a lot of forces are coming together, a lot of direction is happening with this. We think it's a very good site for the potential to continue growth and for the city of Des Moines to compete, to bring companies in. Like I said before, with the certified site designation, when site selectors come in and they ask for a certified site, if you don't have one, you don't get shown. Your city, that doesn't make the list. We want to compete. We think it's a good opportunity to compete, especially since there's not a whole lot around it and it's relatively wide open, and we're not trying to shoehorn it into a neighborhood or anything of the sort. So, we strongly thank the staff for the recommendation of approval to revise the future land use classification from development reserve within a neighborhood node, low-density, high-density, public, semi-public, and neighborhood mixed, to a new future land use classification of industrial, industrial within a neighborhood node. And I also thank them for the recommendation for the commission to find this in conformance with Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan. So, any questions I can answer?
We do, this will be an action item. It's a, right now currently this is a consent agenda item, but we do have 15 more minutes before the hearing starts, so we like doing these five-thirty sessions because it's a great opportunity to answer any questions, go a little deeper dive than sometimes the public hearing agenda will allow us.
Sir? Of Southeast 14th? Yeah. So, Southeast 14th is here. We're over in here, and I guess I didn't talk a little bit more about infrastructure. It doesn't just mean utilities, it also means roadways. All four roads that basically surround this site, southeast 35th, 36th, Pine, southeast 45th, and Army Post are rural two-lane cross-sections. And so, we are working here and designing, getting this going because it's become a nice little commercial hub, but when this starts to develop, we are going to be looking at this as well, and that has been looked at by traffic and engineering. Yes, sir?
So, as an industrial real estate developer myself, one concern that we've had with this area of Des Moines or Polk County is the challenge of getting workers to a site like this, as opposed to, say, in Altoona or somewhere up there. That's why we have not looked down at Southern Polk County. But how, what would you say to a developer who posed that question? How likely is it, how difficult is it going to be for me to find people to work for me?
I would ask first, what type of workers do you need and what type of skills do you need, and then how many? One of the things that we've been very successful with, and the dialogue has been wonderful, is with DMAC to say, can you create programs or help us understand how to get programs to educate individuals who could work here that would have the skills that the employer would need? We've also reached out to a couple of universities to say, could you help us with this as well, create programs just like DMAC? And we haven't had anyone say no. I think they see it as an opportunity to be engaged and also help grow.
Can I ask, in that example, so you're saying that the developer is, I think what I'm hearing basically is you're saying that these don't really pencil out as a result of the travel problem with workers there? What is the actual expectation the city should have of how much we would have to invest in here to make sure it makes sense for the developer? Mike, you're saying right now that basically this isn't an attractive deal for industrial developers because of where it is. It seems like there may have to be a delta provided through supports or subsidies or other pieces to make sure it becomes attractive. Is that fair?
Well, I'm just saying that we, the first question back is if we build a warehouse, not necessarily people who are maybe college educated, but are people going to be able to get there to work at the warehouse once we build it? And so, if there's a higher concentration of people who live in other places that are closer and have easier access to where we're building, that makes more sense. We haven't seen that necessarily in this part of Polk County, that it's more challenging for people to hire people that don't want to drive down there, basically, or drive out that way to Eastern Lake.
So, how do you solve that, I guess? Like, is there anything the city can do there? Are we just sort of saying that we're going to put it there?
That's what I'm asking. That was my question, is how do you solve that? How, what does the city say to a potential developer? I have concerns, I'm not going to be able to hire people. What is the city's answer to that, was what I was asking?
What could they say to you that would help your group want to do it?
I'm not sure. That's my, I guess that's my question.
Got you.
Well, I'll bring it back to the plan in front of us today. When we talk about industrial, are we looking at all of the subcategories that fall within industrial? Because there could be a wide range of things.
Correct. And one of the things that we're very fortunate with this site is there's already a planned unit development in place. So, what that's allowed us to do is start looking at, okay, we take the industrial classification and all the subcategories underneath, what do we truly want here? And so, now we have the ability to start crafting a little bit more of, do we want to see more office research? Do we want to see light industrial? Do we want to see heavy industrial? Do we want an ethanol plant? Those are things that we get to now start thinking about. So, we're working with the development team to say, what do you think about our ideas? We're waiting for their comments to come back. Once we have that, we'll be working with Jason and the staff to say, what do you guys think from your vantage point as the planners? How will that also affect, looking at the map, the potential to do residential development in the north and the south of the area? So, then we put that into the PUD plan, which will come back in front of you for approval, and that's how we'll start with safeguard a little bit of how and what kind of uses we want to have in the area.
Could you turn on the zoning layer? Because I think that might help to visualize where that PUD is. So, this is a case where we will have, because there's an existing planned unit development, I think everybody understands, you know, we're not adding new, the code doesn't allow new PUDs, but we do have an existing one on the books that we, I think, given the special nature of this, envision kind of just redoing that PUD. So, that will have, you know, we'll have a community meeting, there'll be PNC hearing, there'll be council hearings, but it'll also give us an opportunity to really kind of dive in and start thinking about what we might want here. I think we all think high value, kind of cleaner enterprise type things, so, but I think in this case, although we've typically, you know, we're trying to get away from PUDs, I think there's some value in it in this particular case. Very large tract of land allows us to negotiate, so.
So, with that, will you be expanding the PUD to the area north of Army Post Road?
We can't, actually.
No.
That's the short answer. So, if we go to the north, we'd, that'll have to be zoned to EX or I-1. EX would be the business park, and you actually can, on the map, see there is a little bit of EX zoning already along the bypass. So, there was some thought even with back when we were doing plan, you know, the Plan DSM and then the zoning update, of some business park type uses out here.
What's actually off the table? Like you said, ethanol plant, for example, just threw that out. I mean, would we really want an ethanol plant? Or like, what actually is right now, we don't envision this there?
I think we're still trying to walk through all the different potential. What could this be? If it fits in the zoning, or if we just say heavy manufacturing? What does heavy manufacturing mean to us? And so, we're starting, we're still going through that right now. I think that we could look at it saying, we really are not interested in a heavy polluter by any stretch of the imagination in this area. We want to make sure that with 375 acres, we have the opportunity to do a number of different uses within. I don't want to make sure we get one in that particular use, no one wants to be near it. So, I couldn't give you the exact names at this point in time, but we are working towards that. And when we come back to you with the PUD revision, then you'll see all of those different uses that we don't want to see or have excluded out.
You mentioned there were two property owners who were in favor.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone opposed?
No. This property owner here did not return their consent form in time, but we had conversations with them and they were, yeah, this is a great idea, but because we didn't get the consent, we had to kind of cut them out of the actual plan. If they do come back with consent form, we can always add them in.
We've got a couple of minutes left. Any other questions from commissioners?
What's the most similar project like this that we've seen that went wrong and what was wrong with it? And are we actually counting for eliminating that type, repeating that type of an error here? How are we going to do that?
I only have three years' worth of experience here in Des Moines, as far as, but I have 20-plus years in other communities, and I could tell you about a project in the West Lafayette Purdue Research Park that went bad, and we were able to satisfy that by going to the developer and saying, give us back our money, the incentive we gave you. They never built, and we got it back. We were able to control that. What we're trying to do with this, and we're lucky to have the PUD, or with the revision of the PUD, we can start eliminating things from uses that may not be attractive in the area. And with what we're trying to do with the utilities, extending them through there, that's not a bad thing anyway, to have the utilities to service the water for the individual, the housing residents along here, and bringing in the sanitary. The good thing about any type of TIF project is they have to build it to get it. It's reimbursable. So, they have to build it in order to receive funding. And with the PUD and being able to exempt out uses, that also is another safeguard for us. Before we do an economic development agreement, we will be going in front of council for the approval. So, it's not like I, we just do it in our office and that's it. We have to take it in front of a public body, and before it even gets to the public body, the council member is well aware of it, and if they say, I do not want this in my area, okay. So, we do a lot of vetting of a project before it really sees the daylight moving forward to try to prevent projects that go south or don't go well, so we do the best that we can.
I just have a quick question. Looking at the bike trails map, there's a bike trail that goes up through Carlisle, just south of the interstate there, and then one that goes west of this property. Are there plans to possibly link that up through this area? Or would, I guess I'm not sure what the plans are to connect those two bike trails, but they're both kind of just hanging there.
I want to pull it up.
Is that a, is that, I guess what I'm asking is it, could it potentially go through this property?
I think as we develop this, I think we should put everything on the table with our developers who come to us and say, you know, we want to make the connection. And it's, why not try to force it on them? I think that's a good idea, trying to make it more of a connected area.
Under parks.
Under parks?
Yeah.
I see.
Okay, so the purple is?
Want to take the on-street off?
Off-street.
Yeah, let's try that.
Okay, so maybe it's connected already, it's just not showing it on my phone.
Well, the one along Army Post is going to be on-street. If I remove that, it's going to be then off-street.
Okay.
So, we do have, you're right, there is some on-street, but it's still, it's a rural two-lane road, so there's not a whole lot of room. And I think we'd be wise to figure out a way to ask the developer to continue in either from 36th or, 38th, I'm sorry, into the site. So, it's one of those things that obviously, yes, we'd love to talk about.
I think if you, you could also click on the trails and move DSM Future Bike Network layer.
Just one?
I think it has some suggested possible routes. I mean, that will all be explored.
I think the one right above that.
Yeah, the move, yeah, I think that's more current.
So, the one you see kind of cutting diagonally through the actual site itself follows a creek? So, that'll be, they're not going to develop over it, so that gives a great opportunity to enhance the trail connection along the creek. Bring it in.
Yeah, I think that we, you know, with it being a PUD, I think we'll have the opportunity at that stage to get into this, but also this would be the kind of thing, plating and site plans that we would be looking at as well.
Are there, are there businesses or other developers that have shown interest already, or is it way too early in the process for that?
We do. We have interest, but so far as, we are working with one developer on the entire parcel, kind of be the master developer, working with both. They have agreements with both families, and now it's a matter of, okay, what, how do we make this go? What kind of businesses are we going to bring in? And we've met with them, we have a couple of opportunities, but they are so conceptual that we aren't even to the point of saying, what does this mean? Where would we put this on the site? So, yes, there is some activity.
Well, we've got one minute left, so, unless somebody has a quick question. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. The Plan and Zone, I'll start by reading the rules of, and procedures of the commission's meeting, and then we can go into the items. The rules and procedures of the Plan and Zoning Commission. Number one, the Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decisions on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plots, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or development services department staff for details on council hearings. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their requests. Proponents and then opponents from the public will be allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicants are allowed a five-minute rebuttal. The hearing will then be
either from 36th or, 38th, I'm sorry, into the site. So it's one of those things that obviously, yes, we'd love to talk about.
I think if you, you could also click on the trails and move DSM Future Bike Network layer.
Just one?
I think it has some suggested possible routes. I mean, that will all be explored.
I think the one right above that.
Yeah, the move, yeah, I think that's more current.
So the one you see kind of cutting diagonally through the actual site itself follows a creek. So that'll be, they're not going to develop over it. So that gives a great opportunity to enhance the trail connection along the creek. Bring it in.
Yeah, I think that we, you know, with it being a PUD, I think we'll have the opportunity at that stage to get into this, but also this would be the kind of thing at plating and site plans that we would be looking at as well.
Are there, are there businesses or other developers that have shown interest already or is it way too early in the process for that?
We do. We have interest, but so far as we are working with one developer on the entire parcel, kind of be the master developer, working with both. They have agreements with both families. And now it's a matter of, okay, what, how do we make this go? What kind of businesses are we going to bring in? And we've met with them. We have a couple of opportunities, but they are so conceptual that we aren't even to the point of saying, what does this mean? Where would we put this on the site? So yes, there is some activity.
Well, we've got one minute left, so unless somebody has a quick question. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. The Plan and Zone, I'll start by reading the rules of and procedures of the commission's meeting, and then we can go into the items. The rules and procedures of the Plan and Zoning Commission. Number one, the Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decisions on all matters before the commission other than site plans and subdivision plots unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their requests. Proponents and then opponents from the public will be allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicants are allowed a five-minute rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. We've got a couple of items on the consent agenda that I will go over. Item number one, actions pertaining to the proposed southeast... Yep, let me back, back up a little bit. We have to motion and approve the meeting minutes for the prior meeting. Can I get a motion?
I'll move approval.
Thank you, Todd. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any abstentions, same sign. Will, do we have you on the line? Doesn't sound like it. Motion passes.
Yeah, Will, are you there? Are you able to hear us? Does it look like he's connected? Will, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear you if you can hear me.
We can now.
We can now. Oh, good.
Yes, excellent. So we, did you hear the motion on the minutes or did you just hear us starting now?
I heard you on the motion and I vote yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Okay, now I will go over the consent items for tonight's meeting. Item number one, actions, actions pertaining to the proposed Southeast Industrial Urban Renewal Plan, which was just presented to the commission. Item A, amendment to the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification from development reserve within a community note, low-density residential, high-density residential, public semi-public, and neighborhood mixed use to industrial for the area generally located along East Army Post Road, west of Southeast 45th Street and east of Southeast 36th Street, bound to the north by Hard Avenue and East Pine Avenue to the south. And item B, determination as to whether the proposed Southeast Industrial Urban Renewal Plan is in conformance with the Plan DSM. Is there anyone in the public who would like to pull this item from the consent agenda to be heard in the public hearing tonight? Seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like to pull this item to be heard tonight? Seeing none, the item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number two is a request from DART and the City of Des Moines for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, DART operations and maintenance facility Phase One for property located at 3500 Bendelia Road and for the following Type II design alternatives. A, placement of a refuse and recycling area in the front yard along the southern building facade facing Bendelia Road where outdoor refuse and recycling areas are required to be located in the rear yard per city code. B, waiver of the requirement that any refuse and recycling area shall have a gate constructed of a minimum 18-gauge metal panel or other durable materials per city code. And C, to allow 0% transparency on the east building facade facing Southeast 36th Street where a minimum of 12% is required per city code. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to pull this item from consent to be heard in tonight's public hearing? Seeing none, is there anyone from the commission? Seeing none, this item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number three is a request from Monsoon Asians and Pacific Islanders in solidarity for the following regarding property located at 1212 East 17th Court. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM. And B, to rezon property from N3A Neighborhood District to Eric RX1 Mixed Use District to allow reuse of an existing dwelling for an office professional use. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull this item from the consent agenda to be heard in the public hearing tonight? Seeing none, is there a commissioner who would like to pull this item? Seeing none, the item will remain on consent. Those are the three items on tonight's consent agenda. Can I get a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Thank you, Emily. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed or abstaining, same sign. Abstaining, I should separate those. All those opposed, same sign. Any abstentions, same sign.
I need to abstain from item number two. Our office is the architect of record for that project.
Thank you. Consent agenda has been approved. Will, how do you vote on the consent agenda?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Will. Motion passes. We have one public hearing item tonight, item number four. It's a request from Orchard Place Des Moines Children's Home for the following regarding a parcel located in the vicinity of 1301 Canyon Avenue. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM. B, amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from low-density residential to low-medium density residential. And C, to rezon property from NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District to NX2 Neighborhood Mixed District to allow reuse of the existing building as a group living, not otherwise classified use. Siri Yoshi will be presenting from staff tonight.
Thank you, Chair. Sriyoshi Chakravarti Planning Staff, I'll be presenting this item. This is a rezoning request for a property that's in the vicinity of 1301 Canyon Avenue. And as, as you read out, the request is to amend the land use classification from low-density residential to low-medium density residential and to rezon a portion of the property from NX1 to NX2 Neighborhood Mixed District to allow the reuse of an existing building on the property as a group living, not otherwise classified use. The subject property is at the intersection of Canyon Avenue and Southwest 13th Street. It's a corner lot. The area that's being proposed to be rezoned from NX1 to NX2 is the portion that's highlighted over here. The subject property is split zone into the F Flood District and NX1 District. The building, the existing building sits on the NX1 portion. The applicant is simply rezoning the portion that's NX1. The flood district is not proposed to be, to be rezoned. I'll, I'll provide a little bit background on why the property is being proposed to be rezoned. There is a proposed change of use. This was formerly a place that was owned by Orchard Place. It was a children's group home. It is now, it has now been wakened and is up for sale. The applicant that is seeking the rezoning is proposing to use this as a group living, otherwise classified use, which is a group living use as well. However, it is slightly different. It's going to be for single adult males. Formerly homeless, this, this facility is proposed to provide temporary affordable housing units to those individuals that have been associated with the Hope Ministries program. And the existing building that's on the site is, is being proposed to be used for that. There are no proposed additions. The existing building is to be remodeled and reused. There are some site improvements that are proposed according to city requirements. Additionally, they are creating some accessibility improvements as well as some additional parking spots, three additional parking spots. So that is essentially why the, the rezoning is proposed, to allow this group living use. Here's a picture of the existing building that's on site. It's approximately 4,387 square foot. The, the subject parcel is about one and a half acres. This is a site sketch of the existing building and the parking area and other amenities. As you can see, the building sits here. There's some grade and the significant wooded areas to the, to the west and the north of the property. These are the existing parking spots. If you can follow my cursor right here, there are three additional parking spaces that are being proposed. There's also some accessibility and sidewalk connection improvements that are proposed on the site. But outside of that, there are no additions or expansion to the existing use on the property. A few more photographs of the site just to give you a context. This is looking to the west. The driveway to the property is right here, and this is Canyon Avenue. As you can see, there's a new sidewalk that's been built on Canyon Avenue to provide connectivity to, from the neighborhood to the, to the school to the north and other amenities along the area. Another view from the driveway, Canyon Avenue looking north. And this is looking south from the top of the site, from the north looking south towards the residential area. So with that, I wanted to talk a little bit about the staff's review of this proposal and what, what would be required of the applicant. Since this is a group living, not otherwise categorized use, this is going to require a conditional use approval from the city zoning board of adjustment following a rezoning. The, the use is subject to supplemental regulations. The supplemental regulations are listed here in the staff report. And staff's rationale with this particular request is that this is, this is essentially a continuation of an existing use category. So as I mentioned earlier, formerly this was a children's group home. It was regulated by the state. Now there is a proposed change of use. It will be regulated by the city's Chapter 60 Rental Code and other city codes. It will have up to 12 dwelling units as proposed, or units, not dwelling units, I should say, units as proposed by the, by the applicant. Staff's rationale with this is that in terms of a use category, even though the subcategory might be different, the use category of group living is essentially a continuation of an existing use. Additionally, staff has taken into consideration things like the location of the site. It's a corner lot. It is fairly large and so is not conducive to a single-family use. There is some great differences. There is vegetation that provides some separation from the adjacent neighborhood areas. Also, it has very easy access to DART and public transportation options for the residents of the, of this, future residents of this facility. So taking those factors into account, staff is supportive of this rezoning request subject to, to zoning conditions. And I will read those out here. Staff is proposing approval of the request subject to any use of the property shall be limited to any use permitted and limited in the NX1 Neighborhood District. And that's the existing zoning for the property. It's NX1, so all use is permitted and limited in that district. And additionally, a group living, not otherwise classified use only so long as the zoning board of adjustment grants a conditional use approval for such a use. So that, that is staff's recommendation, and I can come back to it if you have more questions. I did want to share additional information on the meeting, neighborhood meeting that the applicant conducted. It was very well attended. Approximately 35 people, according to the applicant summary, attended the neighborhood meeting. And I will zoom in here so you can read this. And these, these were some of the comments and opinions that were shared during, during the meeting. Some of the comments that we received in addition to this was also the proximity to schools and other amenities and the safety of the children that travel along the sidewalk and the corridors. So that was mentioned. And I'll let you read the other comments as well. With that, we did receive several letters and comment cards for this proposal, and I will go through these one by one. The first email that we received was from a resident. That resident is in support of the project. And the following emails are all in opposition, so I will let you read through these. This letter is from the Neighborhood Association. Under that, I can come back to any of the comment letters if you have questions. And I will scan through the various comment cards that we received, and they were all in opposition. And I'll just zoom out a little bit. This is the consent map, which shows the opposition percentage to the proposal. As you can see here, there's 27.1% opposition for the rezoning request, based on the comment cards that we have received. So with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I would be happy to take them.
Thank you, Siri Yoshein. Any questions?
You had one person say that they didn't get a card. Are they, did we confirm that they were not supposed to get one?
Yes, I think there was some, there were some questions since there were several neighbors that were interested in this project, who were beyond the 250 feet notification area. They were curious, and they asked the question of why they hadn't received the comment card. And we double-checked to confirm that they were not within that 250 feet, and that's the reason they did not receive comment cards. We did get a request from a resident who wasn't in that 250 feet but wanted a comment card, and we sent it to her. We, of course, wanted to make it clear that it wouldn't be taken into account in the consent map, but we did send out a comment card.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
How many people were against the project between the emails and the comment cards? Some people that weren't within the 250 and people within the surrounding neighborhood? Do you have those numbers? If not...
We did not plug in the, if they were within the 250 feet, we would include them in the consent map, but if they were not, we didn't do the analysis of how.
We don't track that.
Correct. Yeah, I know that they're not within the consent map, but I just didn't know in total there was 20 folks.
And just to clarify the value, the importance of those cards, is by state law, everybody actually within 200 feet, not 250, but the city of Des Moines, we go a little extra, but the calculation is just based off the 200-foot radius, excuse me. If more than 20% opposition exists of land area, you know, like on this map, that requires a supermajority vote at the council level. So that's the importance of why we track, you know, have those cards where people can sign, because we need their signature to know that they are officially opposed and why those cards are done. But again, you know, just we take other comments, we share those with you, anybody in the community, any citizens, welcome to speak on the item, that sort of thing.
So also to follow up, this would require a supermajority at council?
That's correct.
Okay.
Going back to the staff report, or the staff recommendation, one of your conditions was any use as permitted and limited in the NX1 neighborhood mix use. Could you remind me what those uses are permitted and limited in that district? What does that, just flesh that out for me.
Well, I can give you the definition. I don't have the table right in front of me to read out the specific uses that are allowed, but I know we have a definition here in the staff report.
It's primarily a residential district. It has some allowance for group home, or group living, not this particular group living. But it caps, like if this caps multifamily, for example, eight units max. So that, like, for instance, if this site was to be redeveloped as apartments with the current zoning today, it could be a maximum of eight units, eight dwelling units. And so what we were trying to do with that zoning, with that zoning condition is basically freeze all the uses that are permitted to what's there today, plus just what they are proposing. So we're not bringing in, you know, the unallowance for, should it be converted someday to multifamily, like for a larger project, or some of the other uses that would show up, but that next, that slightly more intensive.
Yeah, and I would just like to point out that NX1 is, as Jason mentioned, is very similar to the NX2 district in terms of the allowed uses, but there are a few uses specially associated with assembly-type uses that are slightly more intense than NX1. But I also pulled up the definition, if that helps. It's intended for a mix of single and smaller-scale multiple household uses and building forms to preserve the scale and character of the existing neighborhood while allowing for new infill housing.
I have one more question for staff. For the second line item in the staff recommendation, number two, isn't that already required as far as the conditional use approval? Why is there a need for adding that as a rezoning condition as well?
That's just, well, do you want me to answer it?
Yeah.
Okay. That really is just a point of clarification to put everyone on notice that when we see that, when they, everybody understands that that zoning condition, that process still applies. And so, yes, it's probably, you could argue that maybe it's a little bit extra verbiage, it's not necessary, but we felt it was valuable to kind of bring that forward to everybody's attention that you still have to go to zoning board adjustment, you still have those supplemental regulations that conditional use has to follow. And conditional uses also can be revoked, but if they become a public nuisance or an issue, if they have enforcement issues, those can be brought back before the zoning board adjustment and revoked. So I think that's another great thing about the conditional use process.
So just for a point of clarification, even if the city council approves the rezoning, conditional use may not be approved, so the project will not move forward?
That is a possibility, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Or we can get the applicant up to the podium. Please state your name and address. You have 10 minutes to present. You can sign in afterwards.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Christopher Pose. My office address is 505 Fifth Avenue, Suite 1005, I think it is. I don't want to say 1050, but it's 1005 here in Des Moines. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Hope Ministries, who's made the request. Candidly, when they made the request, Hope Ministries had hoped that this would be considered by the staff to be a permitted use in the NX2 district. However, the staff recommendation that is before you today has been explained, is to allow for the rezoning of the property just so that Hope Ministries can ask the zoning board of adjustment for a conditional use, for the ability to use the property in the manner that they intend. So tonight, I'm happy to have Leon Negan come up and talk to you about the details of that use. However, I think by virtue of the staff recommendation, that's kind of all being deferred to the zoning board of adjustment for a conditional use of the property in accordance with what the rules are for a group home. We're in support of the staff recommendation. We'd ask that you approve it. We're happy to move on to the city council with the staff recommendation, have the property rezoned, and then proceed to the zoning board of adjustment and request the conditional use. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have of me. I think that might explain why at the neighborhood meeting, so many of the details were discussed of how the property is going to be used, and maybe the neighbors are here to speak about those details. We'll speak about those as you deem necessary, but I think the staff recommendation is set up so that this matter will be deferred onto the board of adjustment for a conditional use determination. Is that sort of what the flavor of the staff recommendation is, Jason? Have I read that correctly?
I mean, it's, I don't know, it's the reality of the code.
Yes.
The code requires it regardless of what our recommendation is. If the property is rezoned by a city council, that's not actually the last stop, so that's accurate.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's what we're saying to you and letting you know. And the way the staff recommendation is set up, the way we read it, it's giving no greater uses for the property than presently exist as far as the NX1 district, because the property is zoned NX1. The only thing it does is it gives a chance to ask for the group living as allowed under NX2 to the zoning board of adjustment. So it keeps the status quo as best as the staff had described it for the property as it is. And we'd ask for your recommendation of approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, Jason, I just maybe have a procedural question. Does this go to city council either way? Like whether we say yes or no, they go to city council?
That's correct. You're a recommending body, so you're just trying to decide what your recommendation is going to be.
And they have to do a supermajority anyway?
Yeah, it'll require a six, seven to vote.
Yeah, okay.
So six out of seven council members will have the vote in favor.
Any questions for the applicant? I will ask if you can briefly summarize some of the operations of the facility, perhaps you have another facility elsewhere, just for the sake of public hearing, so that everybody can hear the information.
Well, I can summarize it and tell you that basically the people who are intended to go there are men who graduated from the Door of Faith facility on Southwest 9th. And that means they would have completed a program, and they are two steps away already from being homeless and on the street. They are on their way back to rehabilitating and finding transitional housing and being able to take care of themselves. And so that's who's intended to be located there, and they're supposed to, the idea is to set up separate apartments, if you will, or living spaces for them to do that, to stay for a period of not more than two years worth of time apiece. Hope Ministries has numerous properties around the city. They operate the thrift stores, they have the Bethel Mission, and they have the Women and Children's Center that's going to be up on Douglas. They have the Women and Children's Center now that's on University, and they have the Door of Faith. And they do, their reputation for taking care of their properties is excellent, and their reputation with the city and serving the community of the homeless is excellent in this community. So they want nothing less than that with this particular property. We've detailed in the submittal that we've made numerous rules that would apply to the people who live there that we think would safeguard the neighborhood for doing it. So we're not ashamed to present the request to the zoning board of adjustment and allow it to be considered, but they do expect this to be another property that they operate in accordance with their other properties. Leon, did you want to say anything else? Leon Negan is here, if you have questions of him about the specifics of operation, but based on the staff report, we felt that that's really not the intent of the staff recommendation, is to have all of that discussed here tonight.
Thank you for summarizing. If there are no questions from the commissioners, then I will invite any proponents of the project, any people in favor of the project who may like to speak, to come up to the podium. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address and sign in afterwards.
Absolutely. Melissa O'Neil, CEO at Central Iowa Shelter and Service, 1420 Mulberry Street. I promised the commission a year ago, as you approved 202 luxury housing apartments across the street from our facility in downtown Des Moines, that I would be back, because we all know that nimbyism exists within our community. And I'm in favor of this project, not only because of our ability to step up and say a mosaic of housing can work, it's been shown to be effective across our country, that when we can actually come together in neighborhoods and show all levels of housing being available for the residents that we serve, that it's a win for everybody. So I'm here because I promised a year ago that this topic would come back. And if I can stand in favor of 202 luxury housing units being built across the street from our facility in downtown Des Moines, then I think we can look at this project and say the same thing is possible, only with the backing of Hope Ministries, going through their program and showing the effectiveness and the results of Door of Faith, that the individuals that are going to be living in these units are wonderful people, and they'll probably be some of the best neighbors you will ever see in our community. I see it every day in our own facility. I see what our community does, and I know that this project can be effective and work with the support of Hope Ministries. And I just want to ask the commission, if we can make 202 units of luxury housing and rezoning work across the street from our facility, I think we can make this work too.
Are there any other individuals in the audience who are in favor of this project who would like to speak? Seeing none? Any neutral? Neutral? Any opposed? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address. You have up to five minutes. And please sign in afterwards.
Brian Joss, I live at 1019 Kenyon, and I am opposed. I lived on Southwest 10th, a block north of Army Post. They put the one up there on Southwest 9th. Garage broke into, truck broke into, found my property at the pawn shop right in between my house and the Hope Ministries building. Had young kids playing outside, mowing the grass, and I can't prove it was any of those people, but once they moved in there, I got people asking for cigarettes, asking for a dollar, you know, while my kids are out there playing. Now I've got grandkids, I don't want to go through the same thing. I understand they need a place like that. I think a more commercialized area would be better than in the middle of a neighborhood with school both directions, swimming pool. That's all I got.
Thank you. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address. You have up to five minutes, and you can sign in afterwards.
My name is Rick Hoffman. I live at 1305 Cutler Avenue. I'm less than 200 feet away. I didn't get a card. Okay? And I know some of my neighbors did not either, all right? I'm just going to go over some things I went at, went over at the last meeting. They're talking about these people have been through some rehabilitation. Some of them, it's only been a matter of a few weeks. And relapse rate for addicts is 80%, up to 80% just in the first year. And some of these people haven't even been through a year of treatment. The rate of recidivism for nonviolent crimes averages 40%. It's higher among men than women. Recidivism rate for alcohol is 52%. And a lot of these people are alcoholics, and I understand that, they may need a place. But if violent offenders were ever brought in, these recidivism rates are significantly higher. Many addicts will go in and they'll supplement one addiction for another. So who knows what you're going to end up with? One of the things that I heard here a couple of minutes ago was that the property is pretty much blocked off from a lot of the housing stuff due to trees and everything else. Not on the south side of that building, there's not. It's all predominantly single-family dwellings, lots of children in the area. And that's been one of the things we've had a problem, you know, wrapping our heads around this, is we want to make sure all of our children or grandchildren or great-grandchildren are brought up in an area where they don't have to worry about those types of things. And that's the last thing I want to see. And another question that was brought up at the last meeting is what type of crimes disqualifies them from housing at this facility? There's no drug testing done whatsoever, none. So how do you know that all of them are doing the things that they're actually supposed to do? And that's another concern. My wife and I will both vote no on this. It's just, it's not in the place that I think that it ought to be in. They have no other properties in the area that actually does exactly what they want this property to do, and that is to house 12 men for up to two years. The other thing is, I was told they cannot have any women visitors, no children visitors. Why? Surely some of these people have children, but they won't let them come visit. If they won't let them come there to visit, it kind of puts up a little bit of concern for me as to how safe kids will be in the neighborhood. That's really all I've got to say. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. You gonna ask about the notice?
No, I'm just, I'm going to ask, where is the right place for this facility?
I think they've got other facilities that are up closer to, well, the Southwest 9th facility is not in single-family area. It's not. There's a lot of apartment buildings and stuff there, and it's not... And it's not, I, I don't even know how to say it. It's not some of the best area. It's really not. And we don't want ours to turn into that. This place, when it was there with Orchard Place and everything, it's pretty well taken care of. You didn't see a lot of issues with it. And I don't see that possibly being the case here. Maybe it could be, but there's a very, very good chance that it couldn't be too.
If, if I could, Rick, did you say 1305?
1305. Go straight through or directly across the street?
I found it. The, I just want to let you know, the assessor records show the mailing address going to Paul Booth.
I bought the house from Paul on contract.
Okay. But I, do your, I guess you just might want to follow up with the Polk County Assessor? Because our, we utilize their information to send notices.
Okay.
Anyway.
Thank you.
You bet.
Please state your name and address. You have up to five minutes.
Christina Cotton Baker. I live at 1322 Cutler Avenue. And my biggest concern is, and it does not show on the maps there, that the entrance to the facility is also the only, and I repeat only, exit we have out of our double cul-de-sacs. So there is no going back to the, both of the cul-de-sacs. There is no other road to get to Southwest 14th or to get up to Porter. There is no exits out of there. So we only can go to turn left or to right on Canyon. And right in front is that facility. So if you're going to have, you know, 12 people there, parking's going to be an issue. And I just feel that that is important, that, you know, there is only one way in and out of our cul-de-sac for the 20-plus homes that are back there. We only have one way in and out.
Thank you. Please sign in. Any other individuals in opposition, please feel free to come up. You can state your name and address and then you can sign in afterwards. You have up to five minutes.
Board members, I'd like to thank you for your time taking a look at this particular situation. My name is Jerry Bradley, 4605 Southwest 15th Street, 50315-3310. I am a born and raised Southsider. And I am also a member-at-large of the South of Watrous Neighborhood Association. In the meeting that was held at the Southtown Library, there were, excuse me, a number of residents that were there. At the beginning of the meeting, I asked for a show of hands how many were in favor of this particular proposal of the use of 1301 Canyon Avenue. And to a person, every single one was opposed. None of us, I think, feel that we are opposed to what Hope Ministries is trying to accomplish. It's admirable. But I don't think it's admirable in a neighborhood environment. When you take a look at where it's located, I did a, certainly not a, I did a survey of the neighborhood. And the people that I talked to were adamantly opposed. And several of them complained that they had not received that note or that card asking for comments. When you look at that, that, that project and you look at the neighborhood, it is basically all homes, single family dwellings. Thank you. And this is the type of, of existence for this type of, what they're trying to do does not fit well with what's happening in that neighborhood. There are other things to consider. You know, the Taj Mahal is a beautiful place, but that doesn't mean that every single person that goes into that building has good intentions. The same can be said for people who are in these type of programs. Hope Ministries have been around a long time. The one that they have on Southwest 9th butts up to Fort Des Moines, blank course, blank golf course. And across the street you have several multi-dwelling apartments. You don't run into homes until you're a little bit farther south on Southwest 9th. When you take a look at the neighborhood, the number of people that are opposed to it could be a better use for this property. We have to consider, not only that, that they are also a 501(c)(3) corporation, which means they do not pay property taxes. And at the rate the property taxes in the city of Des Moines are going, I can remember when I was a kid and we would drive down Fluor Drive and my dad would look at the Orville Low House on the corner of Park Avenue and Fluor Drive. And he would say, "Son, can you believe they pay $3,300 a year for that property with the bowling alley in the basement?" So when we start taking up these properties and using them for something that they're, they're not designed for, then it isn't a good use. We lose property taxes, the home values in the area can go down. Gator Creek is a highway for idunants, for the homeless, and as well as kids. You know, a creek is a draw for a child. It's an exploration ability. And that creek runs right behind that property. Just because it's available doesn't mean that it should be sold and put into this type of use. Also, it's also in, it's east of Southwest 14th. And there are several homes before you get to this property. I just feel that in, in the point of the board, South of, South of Watrous Neighborhood Association, we are not in favor. And we will make our opposition vocal. We feel that we are representing the neighbor, the neighborhoods, and the people who live in our Neighborhood Association area. And I would certainly like to think that the recommendation of this board, planning and zoning, would certainly be taken seriously by the Des Moines City Council. I've spoken to several city council members, to include the mayor, and they have voiced concerns about this project. And I'm a little concerned with the fact of it being a super majority. I'm not sure. I understand that, not on the legalese side of it. But when you take everything together, what Hope Ministry is trying to do is, is admirable. But this project should not be located in the center of a traditional residential neighborhood. It just doesn't belong. It's bad enough that we got Fluor Lodge. I've talked to Joe Stevens on the Joppa Project out on Fluor and Caroline Road. Those are things that don't blend well with our neighbors and our neighborhood. We want to see improvements. We want to see people that come into the neighborhood with young kids. But with this type of a center, and nobody here in this room can tell me with any set authority or conviction that there will be control of the people that move into this facility and how they are going to be taken care of and how they are going to be held accountable.
Sorry, you have exceeded five minutes. If you can wrap it up?
I've been five minutes or guys, you have 10?
Five.
Five. Oh, okay, sorry. I'll wrap it up simply this. I've talked to the neighbors. I have, I've gone up and down the street. I've looked at the property. I feel, as a board member, it is not compatible with the location that it's in. Even when it was Orchard Place, they had problems with teenagers. I can't imagine what could happen when we start talking about adult men. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Please sign in. Anyone else in opposition? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address. You have up to five minutes and you will, you can sign in afterwards.
Zach Sebring, 1242 Canyon, directly across from the property itself. I did not get my card until Tuesday of this week, so I wasn't able to mail it in time. I am in opposition for it and would have been a red property line on that. In the past, I bought the property in 2020, just before the pandemic hit. In the time since I bought the property, I have learned that my house had a home security system already installed with it and had been operable since Orchard Place shut down. That is not a, you know, coincidence. It was no longer needed at that point. Along with that, when I bought the property, I've had several cars go through. I'm very concerned with the number of cars that will end up here. I, Mr. Negan, correct me here, I don't know if it's going to be, but it's 12 people in the house. I do not include that in accounts for the person who will be living on the property to supervise and assist with the system. So that can be anywhere from 0 to 13 cars possibly, depending on how you look at this.
Sir, can you get closer to the microphone, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
At this point already, it's a dangerous road to drive on. I routinely stop children from getting hit. People drive double the speed limit. People get stuck on that road consistently in the winter. Cars have not been damaged because me and the neighbor next to me do not park on that road, nor do we typically want people to there. And I have routinely dug out at least five cars this winter. Cars are going to start piling up there if they have that many people. You could have more property damage, more danger. Since the sidewalk, which has been an amazing project put in, and I thank the city for doing that, has made the road majorly safer, the number of children walking there has exceedingly gone up. And, and I do not care at that at all, but I do have a lot of concerns with cars being there and extra people jumping out in front of them, being across the street, along with what people are going to be living there. When, at the meeting on the 27th at the library, Mr. Negan did not have any contention to do drug testing, room checking, or any other formalities to take his twelve very well good rules, but with no formality to actually oppose and put them onto the people there in any way to be consistent. I lived in a dorm room 10 years ago for three years. I had routine room checks. If I lived in a school that required drug tests, I would have had to have done it. I still have no reason why they cannot do something to consistently make it so that people are with these programs going forward. He has told me at the meeting that they are, since they are 501(c)(3) and pertinent to Rule 628.a1, they are not liable to the Iowa Landlord Act of 1998. Therefore, they can eject someone from the property in a given time without legal precedent. Where's this person going to go? Is the police removing them from the property? Are they just now going to wander the neighborhood? Are they going to remove them from another part of the place? They are not a bat stuck in a home. They are a human being. How related in processes? They gave us no condolences to this at the time. When I bought my house, I had a drunk driver drive through my yard, rip off car's bumper and dodge two trees. Best road is extremely dangerous and more cars and more people does not make it any better when you have 12 to 13 more people. I am in opposition to this project and it is not on a standing of it's not a good project or what they're trying to do is not good. I understand it and I routinely donate in proper ways to pantries and other operations to help with things. But this is not a good place for a major road or another location that is better access, not around two schools, a middle school drop-off point, a public pool, a public library, and an increasingly growing number of children. And this new sidewalk is increasing the number of children and other people that are present in the property. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition who would like to speak? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address. You have up to five minutes and you can sign in afterwards.
Dear members of the Des Moines PNC staff and neighbors, I would like to say that I admire Hope Ministries and their efforts. I donate regularly to their store at Fifth and Army Post. I donate money to them when they ask for meals for Thanksgiving and so forth. I belong to a church that donates to them annually. I think what they do is great, but not in my neighborhood.
Ma'am, can you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
You're fine.
Audreyne Hanson, 1325 Canyon.
Thank you.
I'm three, one, two, three, three houses down to the west. So I do admire what they've done. I, I am opposed to this facility basically because I have lived in that neighborhood for 30, 40 years. I went up against some of the problems at Orchard Place. Every place has problems. You call, you got screamers, you got runaways. I had people come into my home. I'm 80 years old. What do I do if one of these men come in and want to go someplace? How do I call? How do I get help? So I worry about me. I worry about my neighbor who also has MS, is using one of these for legs. Children. The new sidewalk, I see these parents going up and down. I don't even know where they're coming from, but they're hauling these kids in wagons and they go down to the school and then walk back. It's four blocks. I just oppose this. I just cannot see children going to school, waiting for the bus at the bus stop. My own grandchildren. I know what my children put up with when Orchard Place was there. I don't want to do it again. I don't feel that there's enough parking for 12 men. I do not like the idea that 12 men are going to be living there. There's going to be, quote, "a resident." Is the resident one of the 12 men? Where are we going to put 13 cars, 13 trucks? There isn't enough parking. I just feel that, I'm not sure, um, oh, excuse me. I, I just wish that you've listened to the neighbors, our Neighborhood Association. We are constituents of the city of Des Moines. Is anyone ever going to listen to us? Listen to our views just once? We have a beautiful neighborhood. Please don't destroy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Please state your name and address. You have up to five minutes and you can sign in afterwards.
My name's John Carl, former teacher, coach. And I live 1335 Canyon, which is about a block and a half from Orchard Place. Today I was sitting on the front porch enjoying the weather and some kids started going by. And all of a sudden it came to me, this is what it's all about. And from that point on, I counted 15 kids who walked by and headed past Orchard Place. Now, nobody here, I think, thinks Hope Ministries bad. Matter of fact, they think it's good. And they're, they're, they're all for it. But it's a matter of where. It's like building a prison across the street from high school. What, what's important, like at the meeting we had at the library, when it came to the end, and she was right, there were 35 people there. And I asked just two simple questions. One, how many of you are in favor of this thing? Not one person raised their hand. How many of you are opposed to it? Everybody raised their hand. They're not opposed to Hope Ministry? No, 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 they're not opposed to helping people, homeless. But one thing that's important is children and the atmosphere and the neighborhoods they grew up in. I hope that you understand that and that we don't allow this to take place there. There are a lot of places that would be beneficial. This is not one of them. This could hurt the whole entire neighborhood and they know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, the applicant does have five minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Chris Poe, same address on behalf of the
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Chris Poe, same address on behalf of the applicant. Again, many of the details you've heard from the neighborhood, and we're very concerned about the neighborhood, would be transferred to the Board of Adjustment through the conditional use permit process. We think that Hope Minister, Hope Ministries would be a good neighbor within the property. The property currently is tax exempt because it's used by Orchard Place, so it's not taking a property that's on the tax rolls, off the tax rolls. It's continuing a, a non-taxable use as far as real estate. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Leon's here to answer any questions you might have, but the details of the operation, I think we'd be better off meeting out in front of the Zoning Board of Adjustment in accordance with the staff recommendation.
I have two questions, and I'm over here. Hi.
Oh, hi, I'm sorry.
And they are specific questions about the program. One is, how long is the program that folks attend before coming to this new facility? And the other is, why isn't there drug testing? There's been complaints about lack of account, perceived lack of accountability for the folks who live here, so could you address those?
Do you hear the first question?
I did not hear the first question.
She'll repeat it for you.
First question was, how long, how long is the program that people attend before they would come to this facility?
Thank you. Leon Negan, I'm CEO of Hope Ministries. My address is 575 East University Avenue, Pleasant Hill. Yeah, so people would come into this rental housing situation from either one of two places. One would be from our Life Recovery Center, which is the Door of Faith, and that would be anytime between several months and one year. And the other one would be, they would, they could come from one of our other programs, our shelter, for example, and they could have been there anywhere from weeks to months. Anyone who comes here, this is not a program that we're proposing. This is rental housing, and anyone who comes here will need to pay rent, and they will need to be fully employed to do that. And your other question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the question was about drug testing and accountability. You kind of covered that by saying that it's a, it's, it's an apartment. It's a rental more than a organized program.
It is. They've come from a program, and this is affordable rental housing. They'll be paying rent as opposed to being in a program. Others.
I think one of the concerns from the neighbors tonight is regarding the children of the neighborhood. Is there anything you can share with us about the screening process for the residents at this facility?
Yeah. So, again, they will have come, they, they will have to go through a screening process, and they will have to have come from one of the programs in our organization to be able to apply. We won't take people from outside of our organization. I think the thing that I could probably, that, that I would think would be most helpful is this, is just to talk about our track record as an organization today. So, without going way inside of it, we have been around for 109 years, and I've been with the organization for the past 30 years as the CEO. So, an example for you would be this. We do operate the Door of Faith, which is at 6709 Southwest 9th Street, just around the corner from this proposed facility. So, we have operated that program since 2004, so 20 years. And we have in that facility, in that program, between 40 and 60 residents every day, and we have for 20 years. This is our track record there. We have not had ever one person who has been charged with any crime whatsoever against any neighbor whatsoever in that entire 20-year history, with 40 to 60 men staying there. So, that's how I would answer that question.
And so these people have to apply from one of your other programs, and are, what's that vetting, what's the vetting going to look like there? I assume there's going to be a waitlist, and it's going to be kind of hard to get in to these rentals?
Yeah, I mean, the answer is probably yes, there will be a waitlist. And so, again, the vetting, again, they're coming from program, and they're moving into, not another program, but they're moving into affordable housing, which, you know, could be compared to any other affordable housing. This is for people who were specifically, specifically for people who were formerly homeless, all right? But on the other hand, there are rental properties all over that neighborhood where people move into rental there as well. And so, the vetting process would be looking at each one of them individually and what has then been their track record with us while they were in a program.
Do you have the ability as a landlord to screen or disqualify violent criminals or sex offenders from this housing?
Yeah, so I'm sure most of you are very aware, there, the, the rules around sex offenders are very lengthy. There's state rules, there's pages and pages of them with different, different sections relating to different kinds of sex offenses. We are within 2,000 yards of a school, so there would be no admission for anyone ever with an offense against a minor, for example. Hope Ministries does serve a handful of people who have been convicted of some sexual offense in the past in, in our facilities. It's very few people, and again, yes, we have, we have the opportunity to screen for that as well.
Can you talk about the parking concerns? I think there were only six spots. How are we dealing with all the cars?
Yeah, so those spots really are around what the zoning requirements are, according to the number of people who live there. And based on our other programs where we serve people, for example, our Life Recovery Center at the Door of Faith, we've been able to monitor how many people have cars, how many people use public transportation, and we have a good feel that opportunity for six vehicles there is absolutely more than adequate for 12 men living there.
Is there on-street parking on Kenyon Avenue, or where is the actual parking?
We would not utilize on-street parking. I, I don't know if there is or there isn't, but we're not going to utilize it. Our parking is going to be on our property.
Let's say the model's wrong, and you do end up with 12 cars, right? Where do those cars park, and are there sidewalks along the street on Kenyon?
There are sidewalks on the street on Kenyon, yes.
But we don't know if parking's available. Does anyone know if parking's available on Kenyon?
I know at least it's prohibited on the north side of the street. I'm not sure yet about the south side. I'm trying to do a little research on the internet.
While you do that, will there be a Hope Ministry staff person on site, since these are rentals, or is it something that, where you just call, like a landlord situation?
Yes, this is a landlord situation. There are, our other facilities are fully staffed 24/7, but this is a landlord situation. So, what we will have is one of the residents will be the house manager, and will be living there full-time. We'll also have part-time case managers come on-site, but they will not be there all, all the time.
I apologize for being like confused about this. So fundamentally, you don't have a group home, you just have a rental property. As part of Hope Ministries, individuals who are renting here may have a case manager as a result of other engagements they have with Hope Ministries, but they will not have any program, any case manager due to there being a resident here. Is that right?
Well, you said a lot of things there. You said it isn't a group home. Well, the city is issuing the conditional use permit for group home use.
Yeah, they, they're not, the individual units aren't a dwelling by our code definition. They don't have a kitchen. You know, they're, they're using group facilities, so it's a, falls under.
Okay. Okay, so it, structurally, it's like a dorm, which is where we get the group designation, right? But as far as the program, there is no program. Someone could have support from Hope Ministries as a result of some other program they're in, but they will not have support due to them being a resident of this dorm-style group home.
That's fair, that's a fair way to look at it, yes.
But you do have to be employed.
Yes.
Fully employed.
You have to pay rent, and you have to be employed.
Paying rent and being fully employed are not necessarily...
Right, you have to be both.
But you, you do have a specific requirement that they are all employed.
Yes.
Thank you.
I wanted to follow up on a question from earlier. I don't think I ever heard a yes or no answer about sex offenders or convicted felons. Will they be allowed to live there, yes or no? Forget whether or not, if it was against a minor or an adult on those two items, is it a yes or a no?
No, we have not, we have not ruled that a sex offender could not live there.
Okay. And convicted violent felon?
They, yeah, they would be, they would be ruled out. A violent felon would be ruled out, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make sure, hold on. Sex offenders, I thought the location of the property, the proximity to a school indicate a sex offender could not be in that building. Is that right or wrong?
It's for a violation against a minor.
Okay, so only minors, so sex offenses against adults are not excluded from being there? Is that what you're meaning? And your program does not exclude sex offenders who are adults from being renters?
That is a correct statement.
Some of the, the folks out here, we're talking about recidivism rates, and if, you know, people are sober for a while, and then they start drinking again or start using again, what, can you talk about the success of your programs generally, maybe you have stats too?
Sure, I'll, I'll do that. Before I do that, I do want to say this. We are talking about people, specifically affordable housing for people who were formerly homeless. And, and I do not, in answering this question, want to imply to anyone in the room that that means that necessarily that person has had substance abuse in their past, has had any kind of violent behavior in their past, has been convicted of anything in their past. Some people may have, some people may not have. Homelessness comes from many, many different kinds of situations, so I want to state that for the record. But then beyond that, in our programs itself, so I'll just give you one stat. So, in our Life Recovery Program for Homeless Men, the study that, that we follow is for people post-graduation. We look at, six months later, we do a point-in-time check to take a look at four criteria. Are they employed gainfully? Do they have their own place to live? Are they homeless again? Or do they have a place to live? Are they involved in a recovery community or a church? And, and are they clean and sober? And we check those four things. And our success rate at six months for those people is 71%.
Will they be signing a lease, a traditional lease?
It won't be a traditional lease, because again, we're a 501(c)(3) that has the opportunity to evict anyone at any time for any reason.
Okay, I guess that's my follow-up question, is what will your procedure be should a resident or a tenant prove to be problematic? What will your procedure be for that?
Yeah, the procedure would be similar to people who are in our programs. We would sit down with them, we would go through what the offense is, if you will, and if they don't meet the condition of continuing to be a resident there, then they would need, they would need to leave.
Will, do you have any questions on the line?
I'm still here. No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in. Thank you all so much.
And we will go ahead and close the public hearing and let the commission deliberate.
I have another procedural question for Jason Ashiroshi. So, if they get grant, like if somehow all this worked out for them and they got granted conditional use, if something was happening, like the neighbors were having trouble, could they complain about that and report it? And then could the conditional use, you said that could get taken away? Can you just like talk about that?
Yeah, the zoning enforcement officer, just, you know, we have a variety of uses in Des Moines that are considered conditional uses. I think the one that most people are familiar with are bars and a lot of, you know, liquor sales. And so, we've had, those are great, you know, we've had some examples over the years where those have been brought back. And so, what, the shorter way to answer your question is, is the enforcement staff, if they receive complaints that there's an issue, and they check it out, they can document it, they'll issue a notice, you know, and they, you know, we're taking you back before the board to revoke it. And, you know, there is a due, due process, and it takes a little while, but then it goes before the zoning board adjustment for consideration of revocation, revoking, revocation, I think. But anyway, too many legal words, I should use everyday words. But anyway, so that is there.
I have a question for staff. If there was a way hypothetically for this building to be converted into eight units with their own requirements to be considered a dwelling unit, this would be automatically approved based on the zoning?
The current zoning would allow eight dwelling units on this property. So, it'd be a matter of renovating the building, going through the site plan process. Wouldn't necessarily have any public hearing processes, it'd be allowed by right unless they needed some sort of site plan-type relief. But there wouldn't be a question of the use, it'd be a question of the, you know, the site design.
As a somewhat similar follow-up to that, there's also no reason probably excluding funding capacity, that Hope Ministries couldn't try to buy 12 homes in a neighborhood and affordably rent them out to the same population. Correct?
That's, that's true. They would just need to follow, you know, whatever rental code processes apply to them, but from a zoning perspective, no. Where you guys are heading to this just is that the fact that it's group living, where it's share, you know, it's like a shared facilities, that is the conditional use, that is the need for the rezoning.
There are, I think it's also important, these discussions, to correct like two points from the record. Like, many economic studies of similar neighborhoods have demonstrated the same conclusion as coal deering and lash and land economics. Group homes on neighborhood property values have found that it has no, effectively no effect on property values. So I think it's pretty important that we acknowledge that fact of economics. Second one is, increasing on-street parking is a proven strategy for reducing traffic speed there, thereby, thereby increasing pedestrian safety. Plenty of studies on this, again, like Marshall Garrick and Gilbert and Transportation Research Record. So, whether or not we have other issues at play, I think those two pieces, we've often heard a lot as being, oh, we can't do it because of that. That's not what the numbers show. That's not what the economics shows. It's not what the history shows. When you go back to studies of people that live in neighborhoods with group housing, nearly a majority didn't even know it existed, and these are group programs. I know that isn't what this is, apparently. But, and the effectiveness of those programs for bringing back unhoused individuals when they are in a neighborhood environment like this makes it more effective, not less. So I think some of the realities of what actually has, does happen is important to take note of as we're deliberating.
I'd like to add that I've been involved in the YMC's part of housing downtown, and Emily Osweiler, who's the former executive director, she- and Emily Osweiler, who is the former executive director, she has shared a lot of information with me about how group homes really help the people in them stay sober if they have an issue with sobriety or if they have an issue with homelessness. They have a support system like built in around them and she calls it kind of like the secret sauce to helping these people achieve, you know, their goals and be productive members of society. So I think these group homes end up helping the people in them because of the other people living around them and then the neighborhoods are actually better off because these people become productive members of that neighborhood. That's a, those are anecdotes that I've heard from her.
Can you repeat that on the microphone?
I was just saying, this is not a group home. This is individual rented units.
But they do share common areas, so like that is literally what supportive housing is as well. They don't pay rent at supportive housing.
Any other comments?
Have any of the other commissioners driven by this facility to see what the neighborhood looks like and what this facility looks like within a neighborhood? Because it is a very unique and odd place for it. I understand when it was Orchard Place, which is just to the east, it was in a convenient location for them, but it's 99% single-family housing, right around there. Again, I respect and support what these guys do. I will continue to donate to them. I just don't know if it's the right place, if it was more in a commercial node or in a little bit more dense area. I definitely support them. Just seems like not the right spot for it, just in my opinion. As a member of the community, as a resident of the south side of Des Moines, I know this neighborhood. I know people that live there. I just don't think it's the right place for
I guess to counter that though, I'm not entirely sure if we use that same logic, we would ever find a right place for that. As someone who actually lives within the same block as two different places that are run as, you know, group homes that are actually providing support to individuals who actually had substance abuse issues and those items, they have been, you know, on the whole, model neighbors, you know? I can't say that we've never had an incident. I did have a very unique incident with one who was having, you know, some of the support from the private provider that was not living up to scratch, which I don't think we've seen with this happen, but that's also happened in a neighbor down the way who is a no program, who has always had a house, who's always had domestic, you know, they had a domestic abuse issue there. I don't think singling individuals out like this in this case and saying this isn't the right place for it is ever going to land us in a place where there is a right place. The evidence shows these programs are helpful for the neighborhood, helpful for the residents, and it doesn't sound like there's any other reason that we would deny this in a normal case if the condition of saying it's Hope Ministries wasn't there. We wouldn't really be having this discussion if it's already allowed. It would have been allowed otherwise.
Is that a motion?
I move staff.
Thanks, Chris. We have a motion on the table unless there's additional comments. All those in favor of moving staff, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Will, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. I want to thank the neighbors for showing up tonight. It does sound like this project has a few hurdles ahead of it. You will have an opportunity to speak your voice at the city council meeting and at the Board of Adjustments if you so wish. Are there any other items for tonight?
No, I don't have any director's report.
Thank you. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.